Yeah, it is.
I don't think.
An inch.
All right, you're live, sorry. Jumped again a bit.
We good?
All right.
It is five o'clock.
How you doing?
Good.
March 11th, we're gonna call the Slupboard meeting to order. Agenda this evening, we have a public comment and a discussion on 86th Century Way, the consideration of the disposition update, the annual report dedication discussion, Chapter 70 formula and Project 22, a consideration of sending a letter to the legislature, an update on the FY26 budget, and then we will have go into executive session for two different purposes. One is for pursuant to general law 30A, 21A, 10, to discuss confidential competitively sensitive information provided in the course of activities conducted as a municipal aggregator when the general law 164, section 154, on disclosure will adversely affect the town's ability to conduct business in relation to other entities making, selling, distributing electric power and energy. And the second executive session is pursuant to general law 30A, section 21A, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Jason Silva, the town administrator, and William Farrell, fire chief, and conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Jason Silva, non-administrator. I guess we will then be coming back into public session for the town administrator contract, the fire chief contract, and the municipal education. So there we are. Jump to the public comments. Anyone in the public that would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda?
Well, I'm not happy that we're going into executive session and then coming back.
Well, we have to do it in that order because we have to discuss things indecent. Executive session, prove them, and then the decisions going forward and the signing of the contracts has to happen after that.
Oh, okay.
It's the law, Joan. If I could rewrite it, I might, but.
Go on.
Anything else from staff?
No, no, I'm uh, never done this one.
Okay, very good. And we'll move on to the discussion on 86th Century Way. So that is the remaining undeveloped lot on the Century Way subdivision, and that property was taken by tax title years ago. And as a result of our land use committee, they targeted this and thought maybe it would be a good idea to get some income, revenue, and perhaps sell it.
Brief update, just wanted to follow up from our last meeting. So I had a meeting with a law firm who I've worked with in the past on tax title. Brian Merrick, I don't know, Connor, I don't know, Connor, whatever. They don't do this work, so I'm full, Brian Paul, he doesn't do this work, and no one in the firm does. So I reached out to another firm. I had a good meeting with them. The law recently changed in November, so because we took the property so long ago, it's not clear right now whether or not we need to go by the new law or the old rules. So they're trying to sort through some of that. I reached out to them today just to see if they had any additional clarity on that, and they don't, just because there's not a lot of precedent, because it just
Okay.
It just went into effect in November. So.
So more to come on that. Would we be obligated to follow that given?
That's the question.
Yeah.
That's the question.
What is the change in the law? Do you know, are you familiar with it at all?
I am a little bit, so the way it can be sold or has to be sold is different. Like we need to, I guess now you need to, under the new law, hire a broker. Remember this came up, this actually came up in our last conversation?
Yeah.
So the old law, you often, I guess initially, under the new law, you have to hire a broker. And then there's some question on the proceeds. Under the old law, the town took the property, kept the proceeds of sale. Under the new law, the town has to give away to the school. The town keeps proportion of the proceeds that they're owed.
And what is the rest of the?
And what is the rest of? To the former owner.
What? Really? Wow.
But we own the land.
We own, right?
That's the law. It changed.
The new law?
Changed in November. So because we took the property 25 years ago, there is a question on
Yeah, yeah, which one?
Which one we have to follow. So they're doing diligence now.
Okay.
I mean, okay, so just so that we understand this, right? Because I've bought foreclosures before, right? If we have taxes, you know what? You're gonna have to figure this out. I don't want to.
You've gotten before the law changed.
I know, but if the law changed and now we're obligated to follow it, we're gonna be calculating all of our property taxes for 24 years. No? No?
No, it's just how the process in which we need to take in order to sell this property that the town owns.
Yeah, but what he said is but what he said, if I follow him right, the net proceed is subtract your taxes and give the former owners the rest of the money.
That's the new one.
So the net proceeds in terms of would be just what they owed us at the time of the taking. Who pays for all the disposition fees? Us?
No, 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 that's after.
That's the closing clause.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So you gotta hire a broker, the broker's gonna get a percentage.
We don't let, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know. We don't know. It's one of the, and there are differences of opinions. According to the firm that I talked to,
Yeah.
Different lawyers have different opinions on the matter because there is no precedent right now.
I know in my, it happened to my parents down in Connecticut, just for the sake of anecdotes, but they, the town sold it and they had to use a broker, so they hired a broker that was not within the county, because they were like, all right, everyone knows everybody, it's a small town. And they did it that way, and then they kept the proceeds, but I mean, I don't know all the peculiar. When we know, we know.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll keep you updated.
Okay. Thanks for that. All right, moving on. Annual report dedication, we're getting ready for that to go to print. I don't really have anybody that have a mind for that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I think, I have, I read that, you know, and I'm just putting this out there, right? As I, as I think about it, right, we've typically in the past dedicated this to some community individual who has contributed significantly to the town. And in this particular case, knowing what I've learned in the last eight or nine months, right, I'd be thinking George McGovern. George, that dairy farm has been there longer than you could imagine. It is a staple in our gateway, right? He's retired, his health is a little shaky. George, thanks for everything. It's just me. But I, that's fine, I'm just, you asked, I'm putting it out. But if we don't, we've tipped, who did we dedicate this to last year?
We haven't.
Nobody.
Yeah, we've been sort of avoiding it.
Yeah.
The Moller was the last one.
That was like a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
And then we'll just leave it blank?
Let's leave it blank. We don't have to dedicate it to.
Yeah, no, we can leave it blank.
And, you know, the concept of it was to dedicate it to someone who has done significant work in the town, donation of time, volunteerism, serving on boards, has made a major impact on the town. It's not just like a nice guy, but.
Don Pottle recently died and he's involved in quite a few different committees and stuff.
Well, at one point we were talking about setting a criteria for this. I don't think we ever really got to that point.
Yeah, I don't think we have. We have, over the years, right, we've gone back and forth with this.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, with this one, with that one.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm thinking about, yeah, let's just go forward, that is.
Got it.
So as you know, I think, I don't know, a month, three weeks ago, a month ago, I'd sent a letter to the legislature about the Chapter 70 formula, and since then, just for, just dramatically hopefully reform to the Chapter 70 formula. As a minimum age community, we are hedged. We are, you know, in a lot of ways, we have the short, short end of the stick, and the formula, as it is currently constituted, is not keeping up with our expenses and inflation by. So there is this Project 211 coalition that the Mass Association of Regional Schools is organizing. It was called Project 211 because at the time there were 211 communities in the Commonwealth that, or school districts in the Commonwealth that were minimum age communities affected by this. Now it's even more than that, it's like 240 something, I think, 230 something. But we had a meeting last week, there were about 150 people on the meeting, and they recommended or asked for all the school committees, select boards, et cetera, to send a letter similar to what we sent earlier. So I've included, they actually even provided a draft which should be in your packet. So I figured I'd bring it to you as a follow-up to see if you're interested or willing to do that, and if so, we can get it out the door.
I think it's a great idea. Anything that we can do to put the fire under the seats of the folks making these decisions and revisions is very important for us to do.
And I will say too, should note it, Brett Scarsdale has been one of the major drivers on this.
Oh, yeah.
She actually helped pull everyone together, so she's been really a leader and one of the leaders on this issue, so it's good to have her representing.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Should Sina get a copy of this? Sina?
If you want.
If you want. Just, I know he doesn't, he's not part of a Dunsable precinct, but.
He shows to several of them.
But he's a couple of the meetings, and he does, you know, have a vested interest in ground.
Yeah.
I can add that, yeah, absolutely.
And we need to write all the.
Yeah.
Hit them all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's great. You have a.
So can I just ask a question, just from my own knowledge? Is Project 211 the name of that initiative?
Yeah.
Okay. And all of the municipalities that she's brought in are all part of Project 211?
Yeah, there's like 232 school districts that are affected by this. Like I said, I mean, at the last meeting, last week, I think there were like 150 people on the, on the Zoom meeting, so.
Yeah, I had heard that it was, I did, I was just, it's just a question.
Yep.
I just wondered, it'd be nice if they had a website, and I don't know if they do.
Yeah.
Because I did scurry around, I did, her and I talked about this a couple of days ago, and I did scurry around a lot, and she's, she's positive, and she's definitely got the sun, moon, and the stars lined up the right way. She just started.
Yeah, she's working hard, yeah, yeah.
Who are you, who are you talking about?
Scarsdale.
Scarsdale? You gotta be kidding me.
All right, we're not gonna go down that path, Joan.
We don't wanna talk about that, but she's a bitchy book. She spends all her money on other things and then.
Joan, this is not part of our discussion. We're discussing about Chapter 70 money and sending a letter. Do we have a, a letter printed out for us to sign so that we can send this?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the package.
No, I know, but this is not the original.
So I moved to send a letter to Representative Margaret Scarsdale and Senator Ed Kennedy and Rep. Sina? I'm gonna add him into this.
Yeah.
Regarding the need for reform for the Chapter 70 formula and additional funding for the Grotton Dunsable Regional School District, consistent with the recommendations of Project 211.
Second.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Yes, stuff votes for all that, that's been voted for.
All right, we're moving on to the.
Do you want us to tell that?
Uh, yes.
Budget update, Jason?
Okay. So numbers have changed slightly, they'll probably change a little more by next Wednesday, but as it, as it stands now, there was another slight reduction in our assessment from Grotton Dunsable Regional School District, largely because of their health insurance. They've been kind of talking about the fact that their health insurance, they were planning on 10%. Amazingly, I'm not sure how they, they got this, but their health insurance is only going up 2% this year, so.
That's amazing.
It's, it's amazing. So our assessment has decreased slightly too. So right now, a level service budget, our deficit is right around 500,000, so it's gone down about 40,000. So that's where we're at. We are, I have developed kind of a sketch of how we're gonna start outreach and education to the community around the budget, and I'm presenting to advisory next Wednesday, and then I'm hoping to get a recommendation from advisory next Wednesday, and then I'm hoping a vote from the select board on the 26th, so that we can start publicizing and getting, getting information out there, so.
That's.
That's the plan. Just want to update you on that too.
Okay. Is ours, their meeting next Wednesday?
Advisory's next Wednesday, yep.
All right.
When do we wanna talk as a board in terms of, like, is it over? Like, so I left that meeting last week, and then I stopped and chatted with Jason, I think, the day after, about like, well, what if we, what are our other options? Like, put all the cards on the table here, and I know we're putting some money aside for free cash, we're doing some capital expenditures, we're using some free cash to manage our budget, operating budget, if you will? And we have a pretty good chunk of free cash? Like, do we wanna talk as a board at some point about like, hey, the override fails, what are we gonna do? Or, or do we, you know, the, and it's a terrible business practice, and try to Jason look at me and tell me I'm crazy, but do you use more free cash in order to really?
That's, we've been trying very hard, and we've been pretty good the past couple of years of not doing that, and building up our free cash to the much, as much as we can, so that we can use a little bit more if we need to the next year. But I, I don't think anybody here wants to tap into that completely, like we have done in the past, it just puts us in a really bad situation.
I surely don't want to, but it's, again, trying to, if things just keep failing, and it was, we were pretty soundly told in Lees and Groton, and surprisingly here in Dunsable, that people didn't want their taxes to go up.
But that was a different situation. We were looking at one and a half million dollar.
But the math.
Granted, it was over three years.
Yeah, the math is still the same over these.
But, you know, but every, the math is still the same. Every year, you have to vote a budget every single year, and you can't expect that the one vote that happened last year carries in perpetuity.
I agree.
Because things change, and people know things change, and, you know, there have been significant cuts, and I don't like to have to put an override forward, but sometimes you just have to do it to make the town continue to function in a way.
Yeah.
You know, let's, I have a, people, you can't, you know, I completely hear you. People said no, they said no to that, that option.
Yeah.
And many people that I have spoken to didn't say no to the town, they were saying no to the school, and the school has taken their hit and are facing another major hit if this doesn't pass again, and.
So I hear that point?
Yeah.
I don't think enough people know what the actual experience of what's going on in the individual schools is.
Well, it's, right.
It's late, we're now late in the ballgame. I know that we're, at least in my opinion, we've had all these meetings, and the participation is frustratingly very low.
Which is why it's important that we put this stuff out, and there is an article in there from the school committee that is talking about that stuff specifically. They're having their, starting to set up their meetings to discuss their budgets and
I mean, it's hard for the word to get out there at this point because we don't have a budget yet, so.
Yeah.
We need advisory's recommendation, we need a select board's approval for whatever the budget's gonna be. And then, you know, we already have queued up what we're gonna be doing, so.
Yeah.
You know, we do, we already have queued up, you know, a day of outreach, where we're gonna be doing coffees, we're gonna do a lunch in the library, we're gonna do office hours at night. We're gonna offer, believe it or not, we're gonna offer to go to some, we'll call them kitchen conversations. If you wanna have us over, we will bring refreshments, and we will talk to you about what's happening.
Yeah.
And we'll go anywhere.
Yeah.
We're gonna do the same type of social media, website outreach that we typically do, and a whole lot of things. So we're gonna get the word out, but I think we need advisory's recommendation to look at, whatever that's gonna be, and then we can kind of mull over. But I think the first thing is whether or not you wanna go for an override in the first place. I think we really need one, but, but that hasn't even, I mean, I've got general direction from everybody, but that, I think that's, that's the direction we wanna go in, but.
And my idea is not, it's not responsible budgeting by any means, but I also don't wanna, I don't wanna see the library get closed, I don't wanna see teachers get laid off, I don't wanna see us dormer this building, you know, for staffing and such like that, but.
But that's the reality if we don't increase our revenue through the tax base.
But that's a tough sell when you said, when we're saying we're gonna put 100K in stabilization.
But people, I mean, people have to understand, they run their own budgets at home.
Right.
And everyone has a savings account, I hope, has, invests in retirement, and puts money in a Roth so that they know at some point you are going to need that money. That's the security. The town has to do the same thing.
I agree, and trust me, I soundly agree with you, I just think it's a tough sell. It's, it's very challenging to say we're gonna put whatever the advisory suggests we put into, you know, into stabilization when that money could offset, you know, laying off a police officer. It's, and again, it's terrible business practice, but I'm just, I mean, we're having, it's a tough conversation, so.
I mean, just to be frank, the reason to put money into the stabilization fund is to save you from yourselves. I mean, this is the conversation we have, we'll have if we don't, because this free cash is basically the same thing, it's a one-time revenue source, it's dependent based on volatility, volatil-
Volatility?
Volatility. Sorry, volatility of our revenues and our expenses, like snow and ice budget this year, guess what? It's spent much more than what we typically see because we've got a lot of snow, so what's that gonna do? It's gonna reduce our free cash number.
Yeah.
This year, we're already, for FY26, I mean, where we've increased estimates on local receipts, we've, we're relying on a small, it's 25,000, but still, it's 25,000 from overlay surplus. So those things, you know, $50,000 increase in local receipts to balance, guess what that's doing? That's reducing the free cash number. So you can't do both.
Right.
If you, if you're gonna continue to draw our free cash, we can't, we can't increase our local receipt number. So those are, those are the things, but our financial policies, which this board adopted and an advisory adopted, you know, say we're gonna, we're gonna contribute $25,000 at minimum to the general stabilization annually, we're gonna reduce our free cash reliance and operating annually, and that's, that's kind of what we've done, we've made great progress on over the last couple of years. But if you take the step back, it's really hard to get back, because you're just creating that hole, you're creating a large hole then.
And that's sort of the ding that we've been getting from the DLS over the years is that we are not feeding the stabilization, we should be, and we're using too much free cash, it's just a really poor practice, and we've been in a really good forward trend the past with those policies to start. I, I just, I'm sorry, if, the information's out there for people to read, we've put the information out there, we've talked about the importance of free cash for years, and, you know, if people aren't understanding it, or they're, they are, and they're still criticizing us for the, the practice, I'm sorry, I don't know how else to get the information to put it through. It's very important that we set money aside for the free cash.
And I don't disagree, I'm just, I'm just trying to, again, if we have two votes and they both fail, we're in the same place anyways.
Yeah, but you just always know unless you try, right?
I'm with you, yeah.
I'm optimistic, I mean, I'm optimistic that, I mean, that, I really believe, I know some people have questioned this, but I, I think the circumstances this year are different than what they were last year, and I really believe that if we're able to talk to people and help them understand, that I, I think there's a, it's a much smaller request than last year. And in 20, whatever, 25, 26, 27 positions, less in the schools.
Yeah.
And other ones. I think that.
You're talking about last year's cut to the school, that was 29.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But I wanted to just go back to what Karen brought up, which is, you know, and this is just discussion, right? What if it doesn't pass? What's?
Well, if it doesn't pass, then I think these are the conversations we're gonna have to have, but it's gone. But no, no, I think, I mean, at that point, then, I mean, I've gone through the exercise in the office, I thought, all right, if it doesn't, you know, what are the, what are the types of decisions that are gonna be, have to be made?
Yeah.
And, you know, on the, well, we're gonna have to match Grotton's number, which is like a $200,000 number. So that, that's it.
Their budget.
So we're gonna have to find that somewhere, unless Grotton passes it override, then we have to find a much larger, that's 500, if we don't pass it. So that's the problem, you know?
What's our credit rating right now? You just.
If it went up.
Are we at A?
Forget. I don't wanna say, I'll get, I'll.
We were at B for a long time.
Oh, no, we're at A.
It just went up.
We went up, I think it.
Two years ago, I think.
Two years.
Just when you started.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it just went up.
So we're probably at A or A minus.
Forget. Well, no, no, exactly, and that affects, you know, borrowing costs.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And we go, I don't know what I do with the letter, but Standard and Poor's dinged us about 10 years ago over stabilization. And here we are, 10 years later, I don't think we put a buck in that thing since they voted us. There's a letter around, and I'll look for it, that speaks to our budget process from Standard and Poor's, not DLS.
Okay. I've seen the one from DLS.
No, there's a.
It is kind of the same thing we're talking about.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, no, Standard and Poor's, I just gotta get your shit together.
I guess in my last point, like, and I don't agree with everything Mr. Bud Robertson says in Groton, but he's right, but he goes, there's a chance we're ready to be back here next year doing the same thing.
It's possible.
Which I'm like, yeah. Then, then I think of the, you know, the family that was in the back right corner here that I, we said we're doing a three-year override and $1,100. I'm like, well, there we are.
Yeah.
So I, I hope it doesn't.
It's, it's just to.
Just prepare my brain for it.
All right, no, we all need to prepare, we do, I mean, we will be having these discussions on, at some point, of what we need to do, and we'll get advisory, and maybe after that we can do a joint meeting and sort of come up with ideas and scenarios.
Yeah. The timeline is really, it's tricky. If.
Yeah.
If we, if the town asks for an override to level service those schools, it fails, we have to go back for a second override to match Grotton's number, that fails, then we have to call a special town meeting to pass the balance budget. And that's, that is a.
Makes June look like a lot of fun.
That's, it's, it's an interesting timeline schedule.
Yeah, literally, May and June are gonna be intense then, so.
Next year.
No.
All right, anything else on this before we move into executive sessions? Okay. Anyone on the motion?
I move that the select board enter into executive session for the following purposes. One, pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Jason Silva, the town administrator, William. Silva, the town administrator, William Farrell, fire chief, and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Jason Silva, the town administrator.
To.
Two, pursuant to general laws, Section 30, subsection 21A, ten, to discuss confidential competitive sensitive information provided in the course of activities conducted as a municipal aggregator under General Law 164, Section 134, and disclosure would adversely affect the town's ability to conduct business in relation to other entities making, selling, or distributing electric power and energy. The board will reconvene in open session following the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ron Michael, yes.
Leah Vazbain, yes.
Karen Mead, yes. Little Dor.